Good afternoon. I will call to order the March 19th meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Ellison, McGreeno, Schrader, Slack, Lukey Pierre, Kogill, and Rockwell. Our first item of business is to approve the actions from the March 5th meeting. Commissioners may have a motion to approve those actions. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? That motion carries. Next, we will start through the agenda, determine which items will be considered on consent, which we will discuss, and which will be continued. You can find hard copies of the agenda in the hallway. Item one is at 205 Park Avenue. That is a preliminary and final registered land survey. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item one? See, no one will put that on consent. Item two is the Henry &amp; Son Liquor Store at 1220 Glenwood Avenue. That is a conditional use permit to allow a liquor store in an existing building. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item two? See, no one will put that on consent. Item three is the Raising Cane's Fast Food Restaurant at 1501 University Avenue Southeast. Conditional use permit for a fast food restaurant in an existing building. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item three? See, no one will put that on consent. Item four is the Metro Petro Tobacco Shop at 2700 University Avenue Southeast. That is a rezoning. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item four? See, no one will put item four on consent. Item five is Premier Storage at 2845 Harriet Avenue South. variance and site plan review for a self-storage facility. We will continue that item to the April 9th meeting. So if anyone is here for that, it will be considered on April 9th. Finally, item six is the Wells Fargo Parking Ramp at 2844 Fourth Avenue South. Several applications for a parking garage at that location. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item six? Anyone for item six? Commissioner Rockwell, did you want to discuss item six?
Yes, it was my understanding we were discussing.
Okay, we can discuss item six. And that is the end of our agenda. So our agenda as amended is as follows. Items one, two, three, and four will be on consent. We'll discuss item six, and item five will be continued to the April 9th meeting. They have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. A second. A motion and a second. All in favor? That motion carries. We have no committee of the whole consent agenda today, so we can move on to our actions. Our first item, may have a motion to continue item five to the April 9th meeting. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? That motion carries. And next, we'll move on to our public hearings. And at this time, I'll open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. Again, that's items one, two, three, and four. Is anyone here to speak on any of those items? See, no one. I'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners may have a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our one item for discussion. That is item six, and staff is Ms. Wallace. And Commissioner Rockwell, is there anything in particular you had questions on or wanted staff to focus on?
Yes, and sorry for not seeing your email later this afternoon. I just saw. I just wanted to figure out, or hear mostly from the applicant, on what their sort of broader transportation policies are. So, you know, whether there are, for example, MetroPasses provided to employees, Nice Ride memberships, whether they charge for parking currently, if they do, how they do, et cetera. Just to fully understand kind of how that demand is created.
Yep, makes sense. So I think we'll have staff provide a brief overview, and then we can move on to the applicant.
Good evening Commissioners. So the project before you is an addition to the Wells Fargo Parking Garage located at 2844 Fourth Avenue South. The site is located just east of 35W and south of 28th Street. The western portion of the public right-of-way will change significantly as part of the 35W Transit Access Project. The site already contains an existing parking ramp, which is six stories, and a surface parking lot. And in total, there are over 2,200 parking spaces currently. So here is the site. The proposal is an addition for a six-story parking ramp. It would be built on top of what is currently the surface parking lot. The total changes would rebuild the surface parking lot to a smaller size, and there would be a net increase of 696 parking spaces. And Wells Fargo has proposed this change as part of a plan to potentially relocate up to 1,250 staff members to the Wells Fargo Home Mortgage campus. So here is the site plan. This is a rendering of the existing parking garage on-site and with the proposed addition. And just as a note, that the proposed addition is designed to reflect the new West Office Building, which is located just north of this along Interstate 35. And here are a couple other photos of the proposed addition. So staff finds that in general, the proposal will not have adverse impacts on surrounding property. The total parking of the campus would increase to 4,296 spaces, which is well less than their maximum of 5,440 allowed for the campus, as they do have over 1 million square feet of office space. The applicant has completed a TDMP, which will need to be reviewed and approved by Public Works and CPAD. And one of the mitigation strategies that Public Works is recommending is that Wells Fargo commit to funding a traffic signal at Fifth Avenue South and Lake Street, which is an intersection that already has poor service. They have proposed a new stormwater infiltration basin on the site, and the submitted plans included enhanced landscaping, specifically additional conifers and ornamental trees, more shrubs than are required, and a large number of perennials. So the site requires a large amount of alternative compliance as part of site plan review, especially considering the parking garage standards that were approved late last year. So in light of the number of alternative compliance items, staff did request that Wells Fargo provides some additional amenities to counter those requests. And the two that Wells Fargo had kind of come forward with was providing a bus shelter at the existing bus bench on 28th, and providing a two-story vegetated wall on the south side of the existing ramp facing the Greenway. And a couple other conditions to note are, one, to kind of continue the visual openings on a blank wall, and the other is that they will be providing metal grates on the existing east elevation of the existing parking ramp that faces Fourth Avenue to improve the aesthetic improvement, or to improve the aesthetic appearance of that facade. So staff does recommend approval of all three applications. It's a conditional use permit to allow an amendment to the PUD, a conditional use permit to allow, in addition to a principal parking facility and site plan review. And I will stand for questions.
And Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Rockwell?
Do you know how many employees, we know how many employees they want to bring in, it's about 1,200. How many employees are there currently? I can make that for the applicant, too.
It's in the application. The total would be about 5,000 with the additional 1,200.
Okay, okay. Great.
4,600 or so.
Any further questions? Commissioner Cronze?
Yeah, a question in regards to alternative compliance. Can you quickly show us where there are decorative grates proposed in the openings, where there are not on the proposed garage?
Okay, so this is the existing view. This is kind of from the north. And they are proposing the grates on the north side and on the west side of the existing garage. And then there are some sections of the north side that you can see on this rendering that do not have the grates. And then the condition is for the full east side. So they had initially only proposed the first and second level of openings to be graded on the east side. And the condition is to provide those grates on the full east side elevation. They are not proposing any of the grates on the south side of the existing ramp, but they are proposed on most of the new ramp, except for a small portion of the south side.
I'm more interested in the south side. Can you maybe go there?
I don't have any in the presentation, but let me see. Okay, so if you can see right on that top-left photo, the grates are only carried over around the corner for that kind of screening section. And then the south side of the existing ramp and the proposed ramp are not, do not have the screening. Is that clear enough?
I think so. Just clarifying. So the existing ramp, the east side with conditions, would have the screening on all levels?
The full east elevation facing Fourth.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any further questions of staff? If there are none, I'll open the public hearing on this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first. And please state your name and address for the record, and let us know if there's anything you'd like to add to the staff presentation. Also, I know maybe you could address some of Commissioner Rockwell's questions, too.
Sure. My name is Janet Olson. I work with Wells Fargo. My office address is at 2701 Wells Fargo Way. And Mr. Rockwell, did you want me to answer some of your questions that you had about alternative transportation?
Sure, yeah. I mean, I can kind of run through them, unless there's something else you want to add to Lindsay's presentation. I'll throw some questions your way.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, cool. So I just, I was wondering if you have, one, if the automobile parking currently is free parking, whether you charge for it, if you charge for it, how you charge for it, monthly, annually, whatever. And then do you also, are there any programs to provide Nice Ride, the Bike Share memberships, or a MetroPass program? That's it.
Sure. Wells Fargo does not charge for parking at the campus. And we do provide, or we work with Metro Transit on the Metro Pass, and we have it through our WageWorks, where team members can buy those passes at the pre-tax and get a discount that way. We also do our, we do Echo Fairs and other transportation fairs with Metro Transit to help train, or I guess give pride information for our team members about carpooling, about other alternative transportation options that they may have. We do a lot with bicycles and biking. We have a green team and a bike group with that. And we also work with a lot of the different organizations and have throughout the years within the city. And we've won some awards with being a bike-friendly workplace. We have cages for our bicyclers to be able to lock up their bikes. And we've provided repair kits, so that if something breaks down, they can do that. We also have, we did have Nice Ride on our property, and they tested it there for, I think it was like two years, and they decided they wanted to try it on the Greenway, so they moved it on the Greenway. So it's still near us, but we do promote it. And when the literature, we work with them, too, and we make sure the team members have access to that and whatnot as well. So, and we also have motorcycle parking, designated motorcycle areas. And I think those are the highlights. I think I've answered every...
Do you have a general sense of how, what the mode split is among your employees? Just out of curiosity, what percentage of them drive as opposed to take transit?
You know, I would say it's, I would say probably about between 75% and 80% or so are driving, or maybe 20. You know, we're trying to always hit the 30% that are taking alternative transportation, so that's what we keep working towards. But I'd say that's about the split. And one thing that's a little bit hard for us to quantify is we do have a large number of drop-offs. So there's a lot of people, I think, that are riding together. They don't ever actually park at the campus, but they're being dropped off at our entrances.
Commissioner Lukey Pierre?
Yeah, just wanted to follow up on the bicycle question. So approximately, how many bike parking spaces would you say you have, or will have after this is all done?
We have about 150.
Is there any opportunity to add bike parking? And then I bring it up just because many of the parking ramps we see often add an actual, like, bicycle amenity room where they can wash and repair their bike, not just a repair kit to do, I don't know, their cubicle or whatever, but just so somebody can go and store it and take care of it, you know, when it's dry and whatever.
We don't have anything planned right now for inside. We do, you know, they would have to, if they're going to use a repair kit, it would be in, within that caged area. We do have opportunities for them, though, to utilize the locker rooms in our fitness center for, you know, if they have to change clothes, shower, whatever, after they've ridden, or when they're going home, vice versa.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schrader, and then Commissioner Rockwell?
So you mentioned that it's free parking. Is it free parking for all Wells Fargo buildings?
For any of our buildings that we own, it is. So in my portfolio, I can say I have another own location in McKnight, and that parking there is free as well. And at 3030 Nicollet, we have a bank and also office space there, and that is free. Typically, Wells Fargo does not charge for parking.
Okay, no, I just asked because I thought that was amazing, if you're offering free parking downtown, because that doesn't seem like the norm. But, and it's more a matter of if this is an amenity you're offering to your employees. Is this something, as a bicyclist, like, a lot of times, those amenities are lost on those that are, and frankly, taking it upon themselves to bike or find bike chairs or anything. The cost of free parking is not something that they see a value in.
Right.
So I don't know if that's been addressed in this plan. And I think the other point to it is if there was some type, I know that's got to change in culture right now with the repairs that are happening on 35W. This seems like an opportunity to really explore some of those. And I wanted to see if that is something that's been part of the conversation.
We have been talking with more, we've met with quite a bit with Metro Transit throughout the, with the 35W and all of the changes. And we'll be, we'll be really getting more intense with that at our Echo Fair on April 26th with them. And we also have been kind of over time strategically making sure we're getting the information about the 35W construction out to our team members. You know, Metro Transit and MNDAD have been very cooperative and helpful with us. They're willing to come in. And for instance, they're going to be tabling at that April 26th Echo Fair. They're, you know, and we'll have, they'll do touchdown sessions if we want to have them come in other times than actually schedule. We have an auditorium that we can have our team members come in to do different things like that. Yeah, so really just kind of working and trying to rebuild and keep building more and more onto the programs that we have in place.
Commissioner Cronze?
My question is about the elevator, but I want to understand how employees will flow through the site with the new parking structure, because the elevators right now don't have any glass in them. And it's very much industry standard for public parking structures to put glass in an elevator for personal safety issues. So are you anticipating that the employees who park in the new garage will use the new elevators that are built with the garage?
Yes, it depends, well, it depends where they're parking in the new garage, too, because it does connect to the existing garage. And I will say that the elevators in the existing garage don't have glass, but it's a entirely secure garage, so you can't get in and out of the gates when you're driving in and out without having, you know, access. And there are, it's secured with fence and different things around, too, on like the different levels. But everyone, so, and to get back to your question on the two new elevators, it would depend if you're close enough, you may just choose to walk over to the Skyway connection through the existing ramp. And again, if you're on the second floor, then yeah, you wouldn't necessarily do that. But it really, if you're up on the sixth floor, then you probably would take those elevators or the stairs. We do get a fair number of people that take the stairs quite often.
Okay. And then where is the bus shelter being proposed exactly?
On Fourth and 28th.
So it's facing Fourth. The bus is on Fourth. Okay.
No, actually, I'm sorry. I think I said that wrong. I think it would actually be on 28th, facing 28th.
And is there a reason why there's, you're not proposing to add a light or electricity to that bus shelter, other than you haven't thought of it?
You know, I don't know that the details were really gone through. It was just a proposal of potentially working with Metro Transit on a bus shelter, but I don't know any further details.
Okay. And then on the approach to the south side that is facing the Midtown Greenway, I would expect to see some new development on the south side of the Greenway between Lake and the Greenway. Any other philosophy of why you didn't put decorative metal grates on that south side?
On the, the one thing I should note, too, and I don't know if the renderings show it anywhere, the facades are a little bit different on each side. So the south-facing facade is already a little bit different there. If you're looking on the 28th side and Fourth, there's more of kind of like a cable, cabling, and that's a lot what the screening is going to take care of, that kind of hiding some of that. Where on the south side, that's mostly just already kind of a precast that looks like a building. There was kind of only a few areas that you could actually see any cars right now. So there's a little bit different facade treatment on the existing ramp, and why those screens weren't proposed on that side. And then, okay.
And Commissioner Kogill?
I had a question on this, kind of, just to confirm the number of parking stalls and then bike parking. 115 bike parking spaces at this site, and then 4,296 car parking spaces. I'm just encouraging you to think about the goal of 30% riders, or non-car ridership, not even close. And so thinking about if we can get some bike parking within the addition, and where that could be in the site, would be a consideration that I'd encourage.
Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner McGreeno?
Thanks for standing for all these questions. Do you have like an approximate sense of where the employees at this campus live, like sort of how many live maybe in the city or in the outer versus inner metro, kind of where they're coming from?
We do. It's very dynamic. It's constantly changing with churn and things like that. But of one of the latest scatter maps, zip code maps that we've done, really shows that it's, they're all over the Twin Cities. There is a concentration in the Minneapolis and surrounding area, but they're really from Lakeville, you know, up north, Champlin out west, and out east. It's really a very diverse pool. I think we find that a lot in our more downtown Minneapolis locations, because it's kind of more centralized for our team members to get to a lot of the time. Go ahead.
Do you kind of have a copy of that, out of curiosity, so we can see what that looks like?
Yeah, I can get you a copy of it, sure.
Because that might be sort of interesting in informing some of the decisions when we have employment concentrated outside of downtown, if everyone's coming from very far away, what we might want to require for parking and whatnot. So, thanks.
Commissioner Slack?
Yeah, there's, it's in the document. It's like page 98, plus or minus? So it sort of gives a good breakdown. It looks like only about 9% from Minneapolis? I think it's 98 of the PDF. Is that correct? I think that's the right map you're looking for, Traffic Impact Study.
Oh, you're looking at the TDMP?
Yeah. So it looks like 36% from the south, south metro, 20% from the, would be the northwest, and then 9% from generally the Minneapolis area.
Okay, are there any further questions of Commissioner Lukey Pierre?
So sorry, this bike parking, I'm looking at the south portion of your addition that faces the Greenway. I'm just wondering, is there an opportunity, would you be willing to entertain turning some of those parking spaces into indoor bike parking with direct access to that side, to the Greenway? I mean, is there an opportunity to really encourage people and make it more visible? Because sometimes people don't think about it if it's not there. I mean, you don't want to just get people who are diehard bikers, you want people who are also, maybe I should bike to work today. Where would I park? You know, make it convenient for them.
We haven't looked at doing that in that section of what you just referenced, but we really try to, when we're talking and the bike groups are promoting different events, we're really fortunate, though, that we have access. We have a level access right on Fifth to the Greenway. So that's really where we kind of direct most of our team members to access into the campus that way, up Fifth. There is quite a slope on that hill, right where the parking garages are, if you will, that it might be a little trickier to try to do that. And actually, we don't own the land on the other side of the fence, not to say that. We couldn't try to work something out, but we feel with the grade entrance access right on Fifth there, that that really is a great sell for our...
So would you consider putting bike parking somewhere near that access on Fifth, then? Just so it's more visible and more encouraging, just to get a better ratio of alternative mode of transport?
And I'm sorry, are you looking for interior parking? Is that what you wanted?
Yeah, but, you know, bike parking that's interior to the new ramp you're proposing, and then just more visible, so it, you know, makes people like me maybe ponder, maybe I should bike to work tomorrow. It's a nice day. Instead of just like having to be a biker in order to know where to go, how to do it, where to put your bike, you know? I mean, sometimes it's a matter of seeing it.
We can, we can look at that. We do, we, the areas that we have right now, one is right outside of our south building, the entrance, and then we have another one that's at our, what we call our north building. So we have both of those.
Just seems like a good opportunity with adding all this automobile, you know, traffic, and adding this parking ramp to, also, at the same time, promote selling for people who are driving frequently to see that there's other options out there.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Schrader?
I just wanted to follow up with the good questions from my Commissioners on bike parking, and just also highlight, like, that's one part of it, but also just the amenities that have also been hinted at, to make it so much easier. You know, it's just not about that for the city, but also just the health of your employees. And so, thinking about how you're getting to the bike parking, like, is everything plowed? How does that work? It sounds like you've got that with, you're thinking about the grade, but just all the other things that would, you know, make that an easier choice for people.
Yeah.
Okay, are there any further questions of the applicant? If there are none, we can see if anyone else would like to speak on this item. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on item six? See, no one. I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we have just the three applications before us, starting with the conditional use permit to amend the PUD. Commissioner Cronze?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation to approve the conditional use permit to amend the PUD.
We have a motion and a second to approve item A, the conditional use permit to amend the PUD. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Rockwell?
Yeah, I'm going to vote no on this. And I just want to explain my vote. You know, I think that bringing this number of people to this campus is fantastic. So I, you know, in the broad plan, I think that's great. I feel that I basically don't have enough information to tell whether this is consistent with our comprehensive plan right now, and so I'm addressing that finding. You know, our comp plan calls for in 1.1.5, you know, minimizing pedestrian vehicular conflict in 2.3, encouraging walking, 2.8, balancing demand for parking with objectives for improving the environment for transit, walking and biking, while supporting the city's business community, 6.2, protect and enhance air quality and reduce greenhouse gas emissions, 6.5, reduce, support efficient use of land and development that reduces reliance on fossil fuels. So I, I think that because of the way the various transportation sort of incentives and disincentives play out in this campus currently, we don't know if there's really a demand for this. I think we have, we have a high level of subsidy for car parking, 100%. You have a program with Metro Pass, but it sounds like people have to buy those passes, while they don't have to pay for parking. You promote Nice Ride, but people have to buy Nice Ride memberships. And, you know, I am, when thinking about this, I did a little bit of research, and recently the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation opened their new headquarters in Seattle for 1,200 employees. So it's just about exactly what we're talking about here. And they worked with the city of Seattle to come up with a program to charge for parking. And the city required them to charge for parking and charge daily, not monthly. And they charged daily, $12 a day, and the monthly charge was capped at $120. So you couldn't, you know, the first 12 days, or the first 10 days, you pay, and then it's free the rest of the month. But the psychology changed people's behaviors to go from a 90% car mode share to a 34% mode share, which, just looking at the incentives and the lack of incentives here, in a place that's off of 26th Street, protected by plane... in a place that's off of 26th Street, protected bike lane, off 28th Street, protected bike lane, off the Midtown Greenway, off the 21, off the future orange line stop, nearly 18, walkable to East Street. I can keep going, but I won't. I mean, this is one of the most walkable places we have in Minneapolis. And I think that we should be encouraging as our comprehensive plan requires as to that walkability and taking advantage of the fact that these places are accessible where a lot of places in the metro area are not. And so what I am going to do is vote no. And if enough of my fellow commissioners vote no with me, I would hope that you would test several of these kinds of ideas over the next year and then come back to us with whatever you actually need. All right, now, I can't tell if this is consistent with the comp plan because you're not trying to actually create a system that plays towards the city's goals.
All right, is there any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve. I'll just add, you know, I do share some of Commissioner Rockwell's concerns. And I would certainly encourage Wells Fargo to, you know, continue to be proactive to increase that mode split so that fewer than 80% of its employees are driving. I do think though, this is kind of a unique site in that, you know, the mode split based on the transit access here, which isn't terrible. And certainly the proximity to the Midtown Greenway allows for really good bicycle access from around the metro area. I do think it's maybe not realistic to expect to see the same mode split we might see downtown where it's realistic to expect a very large percentage of employees to not commute by car. I think this is kind of a unique campus and it's a very large office campus in the middle of the city. We don't have a lot of other instances where that occurs. I'm happy to see that Wells Fargo is interested in expanding employment in Minneapolis. Certainly, we welcome that. And, you know, because of the unique site configuration here, it's probably reasonable to allow the parking garage to expand. And I think that's generally consistent with our comprehensive plan. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second to approve. Clerk, please call the roll.
Kogel.
Nay.
Ellison.
Aye.
Kronzer.
Aye.
Lukey here.
No.
Magrino.
Aye.
Rockwell.
No.
Schrader.
Aye.
Slack.
Aye.
Sweetsie.
Aye.
It's six to three.
And that motion carries. Next, we have a conditional use permit to allow in addition to a principal parking facility. Commissioner Kronzer.
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit to allow principal parking facility with the one stated condition.
Second, a motion and a second to approve item B, the conditional use permit to allow the addition to a principal parking facility. Any further, any discussion? Commissioner Magrino.
Now, I'll just throw some general comments on this item. I think I agree in principle with what Commissioner Rockwell was saying earlier. But I don't know outside of downtown, kind of as President Brown was saying, that we can really expect that high of a transit or biking, walking mode share at this point. I think if we had been planning things better and maybe we're a little bit further along on planning rail in the Midtown Greenway or getting the D-line funded or even the B-line on Lake Street, this is an area that probably could support a little bit more of transit ridership. And we could probably realistically expect employers to be using that. Like I took the 11 yesterday and it goes by the site. But that's not necessarily convenient for a ton of folks. And so I wish that we had made better investments over the past 10 years, but we haven't done that. And so we end up with huge parking ramps like this, unfortunately.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second to approve. Clerk, please call the roll.
Kogel.
Nay.
Ellison.
Aye.
Kronzer.
Aye.
Lukey here.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Rockwell.
No.
Schrader.
Aye.
Slack.
Aye.
Sweetsie.
Aye.
Seven to two.
That motion carries. Finally, we have item C, the site plan review. Commissioner Kronzer.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve site plan review with the 13 stated conditions. And I'd like to amend three of them. Condition number nine, I'd like to amend to strictly say shall darken the panels on the blank wall instead of requiring the recess or. I think darkening is probably the most appropriate thing there if there's a recess. That would be okay too. Number 10, I'd like to add a sentence at the end that says, "And all openings on the southern elevation and the southern forebays of the east elevation of the proposed garage shall have metal screens installed." And then condition 11, add the phrase, "And provide electricity for light and heat to the bus shelter."
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve item C, the site plan review with some modifications to the conditions listed in the staff report. I'll try to summarize those. So item nine will be amended to strike the words recess and/or and just state that the applicant shall darken the panels on the blank wall. Item 10 shall be modified so that in addition to the openings on the east elevation of the existing parking garage be screened, that also the southern elevations and southern forebays of the east elevation shall be screened. And then item 11 will be modified so that the transit shelter, that electricity for light and heat is provided to the transit shelter, 28th Street and Fourth Avenue. Commissioner Rockwell.
I would like to add a, what are we, 15th condition? 14th condition. That the applicant include, add 119 bicycle parking spaces. And work with staff to figure out a place for those, which is, reflects a 30% mode share goal.
And Commissioner Rockwell, maybe we should just clarify. Are you proposing 119 spaces in addition to what they're proposing right now? Is that, am I understanding that?
How many do they have right now? They already have bike parking space, but I don't think they're adding any, isn't that correct? Right.
Okay, so 119 new bicycle parks.
Right, which would be 30% of the 696, which I guess would actually end up being 25% because I'm terrible at math and don't know how to figure all this stuff out, but you know.
All right, so we have a motion to add a 14th condition that 119 new bicycle parking spaces be added and that the applicant work with staff on the location.
And just to reiterate, you know, I'll refer back to my comments earlier for the comprehensive plan basis for that and the connection between this application and the nexus and proportionality between this application and the parking spaces.
All right, and is there a second to add? We have a motion and a second to add that 14th condition. So we can go back to our, actually, why don't we vote on that condition? All in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries. We've added that 14th condition. Is there any further discussion on the original motion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second to approve item C, the site plan review with some changes to conditions nine, 10, and 11 and adding condition 14. Clerk, please call the roll.
Kogel.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Kronzer.
Aye.
Lukey here.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Slack.
Aye.
Sweetsie.
Aye.
Nine zero.
That motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item six and also concludes our business for today. We have committee the whole, this Thursday, executive committee at 3:30 beforehand. Our next meeting is April 9th and we are adjourned.